...Thank you. Please conduct yourself in a lawfully and respectful fashion. The comments of citizens assessing this portion of our meeting are neither adopted nor endorsed by this body, but heard as requested. First person on the sign-up sheet, Robert Lombardo, 12 High Street.
Thank you. I'm glad you're talking about rules, Mr. Celico, because the rules of this procedure is all -- this is Town Council Rule of Procedure 3C. Mr. Celico, "All matters which members of the public wish to have placed on the agenda for a town council meeting must be submitted to the town clerk by 4:00 PM on Wednesday" preceding the council meeting." I did exactly that. You denied it. It's the first time in, what have I been here, four years? I've talked about Duhamel, when he was the chairman, Diana Serra. I criticized everybody. But when it comes to Mario Celico, you can't criticize Mario Celico. You need to spend some time with the rules. Also, Mr. Celico, it's not FOIA. We don't have FOIA in the state of Rhode Island. That's a federal law. We have the Access to Public Records Act. I would think that you sat through the Attorney General when she came down, or Special Attorney General, she explained that to you. So you need to know some rules as well. Also, Mr. Celico, the rules of -- Robert's Rules of Order, when somebody makes a motion, like Mr. Gagne did, when he nominated Mr. Duhamel for the seventh seat, the Robert's Rules of Order say you cannot argue against the motion. Mr. Gagne immediately argued against the motion. That is a violation of Robert's Rules of Order. You might want to spend some times with Robert Rules of Order so that you know them. But we know that was a charade, that episode. You had no intention of having Mario Celico -- I mean, Duhamel on the town council, and you're still playing games with Karen Kioffi, who should be up here and nominated, but you haven't done it because you don't want her, because she won't pledge allegiance to you. You are a clear and present danger, in my opinion, to the town of Westerly, and we can thank Mr. Overton and Mr. Gagne for keeping you there. You have no business being there. Now, the reason I put on the agenda that I don't think you're qualified is because in our town charter, the qualification, if a councilman shall cease to possess any of these qualifications, or shall be convicted of a crime involving moral perpetuity -- you haven't been convicted of a crime of moral perpetuity, but moral perpetuity, and the next time you do the charter again, you might want to change moral perpetude. It's a little vague. It's an old term, but it's a legal concept in the United States where somebody's behavior gravely violates the sediment or accepted standards of the community. One of those is perjury. That's a crime of moral perpetude.
Yes, Sisler. Is your mic on? Your mic's not on.
I apologize. Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
May I just -- I feel compelled to respond to the description of moral perpetude because it is a very important term under charters throughout the state of Rhode Island and throughout the republic, in fact. And I don't want the council to be misled about the meaning of that term under your It is correct that it's a pretty old term. As a result of it being a pretty old term, there's legions of cases interpreting what it means, and they're pretty consistent. It actually goes back to common law England, even before we came over with the colonies, because moral perpetude was a basis for removing an official from public office in common law England, even before our charters adopted that principle. And going back to that point in time, moral perpetude began to sort of be defined and has come to a well-known definition under our charters, well-known definition by cases -- under cases both federal and state. They're pretty consistent. Now, what moral perpetude means for purposes of your charter, and any charter in the state of Rhode Island, because they pretty much all use it, is that it's a crime of scianta. So scianta means that you have a specific intent to commit a criminal act, and you're convicted of that. So that's to be contrasted with a criminal act of general intent that doesn't require scianta, and therefore is not a crime of moral perpetude, although it's a crime. It could be a felony. If it isn't one that requires a specific intent under the criminal laws, it doesn't constitute a crime of moral perpetude. So the vernacular description that you just received of that important legal term, especially as it relates to your charter, is really inadequate to give you the full meaning of the term, so I didn't want you to be misled. I apologize for interrupting, Mr. Chairman, but I thought that was important.
Thank you. I know that I took that from Black's Law Dictionary definition here. So if you've got a problem, you should maybe talk to Black. I disagree with you. Anyway, however, that being said, perjury is one of them. And so my argument is, yes, Mr. Celico has not been convicted of a crime of perjury, but he went into a court in the state of Rhode Island, swore to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help me God. And when he was finished with the testimony, the judge, Judge Lanny, told him that I've listened to the testimony of Mr. Celico, and he is not credible. And it's obvious from reading, and if I had been allowed to put this on the agenda, a link to the document would have been there, but it wasn't.
Mr. Chairman?
Wait, what is with the time? I got a time limit in.
The solicitor has the floor, Mr. Lombardo. You've credited your time, any time that's taken away.
Thank you. Yes.
I apologize for interrupting again, but I think we need to be careful at this point in time. Couple of reasons. There is a long distance between findings of credibility in a contested matter and an allegation of perjury. Courts routinely, every day, from 9:30 in the morning to 4:30 in the afternoon, make findings of credibility, and even the bandwidth on credibility is very significant. So it's really not appropriate to pretend that an assessment of credibility on any specific matter comes close to the crime of perjury, or any of the elements required for the crime of perjury. Additionally, and the reason I jumped in at this point in time, and I apologize to all the members of the council, is that the reference that I just heard was to a family court judge. And if I heard the -- if I heard correctly, it was Judge Lanny, it's a family court judge. Now, the topic of qualifications to serve public office under the charter, as the charter establishes them, and a proceeding in a family court that may involve, in all likelihood, that's why they call it the family court, involve personal matters related to the Celico family, or any other family member of any member on this council that is hardly related to the public policy and public functions of this body. In a conversation just a little while ago, it's becoming clearer to me now as the discussion has developed, in the conversation just a little while ago, I had an opportunity to identify for the council some of the reasonable limits that the courts have recognized on discussion in a limited public forum of town councils. And one of those certainly is that, you know, ad hominem personal attacks, or even matters related, as this may in all likelihood be, to a personal family matter, not related to the public policy functions of the body, do not have to be permitted in a limited public forum. And for the sake of completeness, I'll go back and identify at least some of those cases and some of the language that I referenced earlier. And I must say, too, by the way, now that I think about the discussion that I had with Mr. Lombardo prior to the meeting, because that did come up, Mr. Lombardo brought that up, this was not about any individual on this council. Respectfully, Mr. Chairman, it wasn't about you or anything to do with you. It was about what topics are appropriate for discussion in a limited public forum. So I wanted that to be clear. As I said, when I looked at the agenda, I didn't even have an idea why that had been brought to my attention initially. But whether this was about a matter of your family business, in family court, whatever it might be, or anybody else's, the analysis would be the same. Just it's not about you. It's about the issue. And in Perry Education Association versus Perry Local Educators Association, it's a First Circuit case. The court pointed out that it's implicit in the concept of the non-public forum is the right to make distinctions and access on the basis of subject matter. Access to non-public forum can be restricted as long as restrictions are reasonable and are not in effort to express -- excuse me, to suppress expression merely because public officials oppose the speaker's point of view. And that's another First Circuit case. And the reason I read those two together is because they assist us in a guideline, in understanding a guideline that's been provided to us throughout all these cases, which is so long as the distinctions are drawn are reasonable in light of the purpose served by the forum and are viewpoint-neutral. Viewpoint-neutral means it can't be about a political or public policy point of view, not about some personal, private matter unrelated to the public body's functions. And that's where you get the distinction reasonable in light of the purpose served by the forum. It's just, I know that I pulled up some standard cases, and I made a note to myself on another key point that I want to share with the council. This is Icon Lab versus the Township of Indiana, 385 Fed Third, 274. Unlike the other cases which I had cited to you as a First Circuit case, this is actually a Third Circuit case, a case decided in 2004, in which it was noted that restricting discussion to topics of public as opposed to private concern serves the function of confining discussion to the purpose of the meetings. In a related case, again, going back to our First Circuit, our First Circuit noted that the Constitution does not grant members of the public generally a right to be heard by public parties -- public bodies, excuse me, making decisions of policy. Policy-making organs in our system of government have never operated under a constitutional constraint requiring them to afford every interested member of the public an opportunity to present testimony before any policy is adopted. And I apologize, I realize I read that in my first discussion, I'd read it again. But the point I'm making, if I'm not being clear about it, is that frankly, there's not an unrestricted right under the First Amendment to come into a limited public forum and engage in discussions that are not related to the mission of the public body, which are, in this case, are public policy matters.
Thank you, Mr. Solicitor. Counselor Overton?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. May I direct the question to the solicitor?
Yes.
Are you saying, Mr. Solicitor, that we don't have to listen to public discussion about somebody's divorce?
Whether it be a divorce, whether it be matter related to their children, unless that's somehow related to the public policy before the body, yes, I am advising the council that you, in a limited public forum, may reasonably decline to listen or allow that kind of public expression.
This is where I stand on it. I have absolutely zero interest in listening about Counselor Celico's divorce. I have absolutely zero interest in listening to Counselor Marone's divorce. I have no interest in listening about Counselor Gagne's divorce. I have no interest in listening to anybody's divorce. That's where I stand on this issue. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. So, Mr. Solicitor, we're going to have to take your advice in reference to this issue, as to whether or not Mr. Lombardo can come to the podium and talk about any individual, any individual counselor's personal life unless it's directly related.
Well, I'd like to have a chance to respond.
Excuse me. You'll have your chance.
Yeah. I want a chance to respond.
So we need your opinion as to how to move on this.
Well, again, qualifications for office is legitimate. You have a charter that outlines its qualifications. Now, understanding that qualifications in one person's eye may be different than other person's eye, some -- in the village square and on the campaign trail, the term qualifications, you know, can be loosely allied with, you know, where you went to school, you know. But in a limited public forum, you do not have to allow that kind of comment and inquiry unless, for some reason, I'm not saying I can even illustrate one to you, I'm just saying it for purposes of qualifying it, unless for some reason it becomes related to the public policy matters before you.
Mr. Lombardo?
Yes, I'm not talking about anybody's divorce, and we have a limited -- this is a limited forum, but you have chosen to limit this discussion to 15 minutes. You have not chosen to limit the subject. You can do that. We've had this discussion. Mr. Conley has all the laws, but he obviously doesn't understand how to put it all together. You have decided here that there are no restrictions. You have decided that. If you want to put restrictions, you can. Now, what I'm talking about is honesty. I'm not talking about anybody's divorce. You can dismiss it as that because it's in that court. And you can -- and Mr. Conley can say, oh, it's not perjury. That's fine. I can make an argument that somebody's dishonest. And the only reason we're getting to this is because you don't want to hear it. But this has nothing to do with family court. This has nothing to do with a divorce. This has to do with honesty. And I don't believe your honesty, and if you would allow me to finish, you will see. But it's not every day that you're found in contempt of court. I've been practicing for 20, over 20 years. I've never had anybody found in contempt of court. It's impossible. Now, this isn't about divorce. This is about qualifications and honesty. And I don't know where all of a sudden now we don't have, you can't say what you want. Because it was okay when I talked about Diana Serra. It was okay, and you were cheering me on, First Amendment, Steve Hartford, Duhamel, Douglas, all of you cheering me on, First Amendment, First Amendment. Now we talk about Mario Celico, and now we can't talk about him. Is that the case? We'll go to court. He's absolutely wrong. He's right in the sense you can have a limited, and you can cut the discussion off, but when you tell people, they can come up and talk about anything, and they do, but certain things you can't, that's where you're going to get in problems. And I don't care what you do. You've already moved me away from it once, so I'm inclined to file an action against the town because you've never said that you can't talk about anything you want. And he's wrong about the case law. You cannot stop criticism of a counselor. That's case law. We discussed it. If he wants to ruling unconstitutional prohibit -- prohibition against criticism of government and its employees, finding it viewpoint-based as well as overbroad, and that would include allegations of incompetence, corruption, laziness, dereliction on personal immorality. Those are personal issues. The courts have said you can go after personal issues on personal council member. Mr. Conley is absolutely wrong. He doesn't understand that. You can limit it, but you've chosen as a body not to. But now you're selectively doing it now. And also, this is not a family court matter. The divorce is over, Mr. Overton. It was over years ago. This is about a guy who's lying. And I just want to explain what happened in this transcript. And I also want to remind you, everybody, because you all got the email, when I first said I was going to get this transcript, Mario Celico went around telling everybody, I'll pay for it. Tell Bobby I'll pay for it. And so then I asked him to pay for it. He didn't pay for it. He wanted to pay for it, now he wants it out, doesn't want it out there. And that's why I was removed from the job, the radio show. Absolutely. Well, Mr. Celico, you can laugh, and Mr. Gagne can call me a liar, but Chris DiPaolo went in there, and he said John Gagne doesn't want you to have this show. He's afraid of Mario Celico. Yeah, you can laugh. That's what he said. And Mr. First Amendment, Mr. First Amendment. And then he said he was worried about losing his tower. And I said Gagne and Celico won't be there for very long. And then he described to me how he had conspired to break the law before to keep his tower. So you can laugh, but that's what he said. And he specifically mentioned you two, over and over again. But anyway, let me get to this motion. This is a motion, and it reflects on Mr. Celico. What he did was, he had been ordered to pay a bill. Okay? He sends the check in.
Point of order. Point of order, Counselor Gagne.
Okay. A question for the solicitor, may I ask? All right. I can understand Mr. Lombardo wanting to say that a counselor may not be qualified. But this idea that we have, you know, we're going to hear from the transcripts, or we're going to hear a description of the transcripts, I think I heard it loud and clear that it's getting to be a bridge too far. And it's not because it's Mario Celico or anybody else. We're at the point here where it's not public policy anymore. So am I correct in understanding that, I mean, if Mr. Lombardo, my question for you is this, if Mr. Lombardo limits his comments to, at a very high level, and doesn't go into the transcripts, would he be well within his rights to criticize a counselor?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
He went into court, and he told the judge, and I just want to, this is the judge's statement about your vice president. He has no credibility. And it's not a private matter. When you go into a court, Rhode Island court, it's their time. It's everybody's time. The judge tells him that he's fooling around and wasting the time of the court, playing games. How is that not relevant? That here's a man who will go into a court in the state of Rhode Island and lie repeatedly. And what he did was, he kept an envelope, took an envelope that he was sent on July 17th. So the hearing's in August 15th. And he tells the judge that he paid the bill. But what he didn't tell the judge is the bill got sent back to him, but he didn't open the envelope so he could argue, I didn't pay the bill. This is the type of man this is that I'm talking about, and you don't want to hear it. And Mr. Gagne, you are the biggest hypocrite. You walked around telling everybody, First Amendment, First Amendment. It depended on who I was talking about. Same with Mr. Overton. Now I'm going to talk about Mr. Celico, and you don't want to hear it. You're dishonest. And also, Mr. Celico, and I'm going to get in trouble for saying this, when you're here on the council and you go to hit on a woman in the council, and you tell her she's good-looking, and that you can't stand back there because she's distracting you from the business, you're like a Mr. Weinstein. Is that public information? Do you want Mr. Celico hitting on women in the chambers? And the only reason they don't say anything is because they're afraid of losing their funding? Is that the kind of counsel you want? That's what he does. And if I'm not telling the truth, Mr. Celico, you can take me to court. But you are just like the Weinstein. And the other thing, so that's what I'm saying. But again, getting back to the motion, you were found in contempt of court for willfully disobeying a court order. That's the type of guy we have here. Willfully disobeying a court order. And then after you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, the judge says, Mr. Celico, you have no credibility. That's what I wanted to say to you tonight. And I don't see how that's a big deal, Mr. Conley. I really don't. I think you're grasping at straws. But if you want them to change their policy, then change their policy. But people get up here and they talk about anything they want. So a limited forum, that's fine, but change the policy. You can't do it based on what's being said, and that's where you're off base. But I just want everybody to know that it took a lot to get that out. Took me coming up here twice. You interrupted me over and over again because you don't want it out. So now, Mr. Celico, when I make the request again, what is the rule?
Well, Mr. Lombardo, seeing as you said that I had a conflict of interest in reference to your agenda item, okay? And the president sets the agenda. The president, chairman, vice president, whatever you would like to consider me, referred it to the solicitor for their determination, and they are the ones who said, you will not be on the agenda.
Who's "they," Mr. Celico?
The solicitor's office.
He said he did not. He, Conley, said he never knew about it.
One of the attorneys in --
Give us a name, Mr. Celico.
No, I won't speak to that. The solicitor will speak to that. Mr. Solicitor?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So the travel is this, as best I can figure out, is that, and by way of explanation, I was on trial in Superior Court last week, so when the call came into my office, one of my associates responded to the call. And listening to the exchange, again, and the conversation I had really with Mr. Lombardo, I did mention to him that my assistant had brought it to my attention, but listening to the exchange, it was an associate in my office who brought it to my attention. And the associate identified it as, I've got to have a note here, I'm going to read the note. I wrote to myself so that, in preparation for the Westerly Town Council meeting, a member of the public may plan to speak about a private matter related to the personal life of one of the members of the council. And so therefore, I should be ready to address that First Amendment issue on the record. I did not understand that there had been an issue about whether or not to put it on originally. I actually thought it was going to come up in the context of tonight's meeting. This had really, I looked at the agenda, nothing was apparent on the -- nothing was apparent on the agenda. So I did make an assumption that it would probably come up, if it did at all, under this section of the docket, the second public comment section. And I think that was a pretty accurate description that I received from my associate. If there was, in terms of those communications with my office and the town clerk, if there, I don't even know if there was explicit advice not to place a personal item on the agenda or not. I tried to, in fact, I tried to ask Mr. Lombardo in his conversation with me exactly what it was he wanted to put on the agenda, and frankly, I didn't I didn't get a response that I understood. And I asked him a number of times for clarity in that discussion. And I now, now I know what it is. But that's how, that's the travel of it. So I apologize on behalf of my office for any confusion with the clerk. But I do think the description that I received is pretty accurate.
Thank you. Well, first of all, Mr. Conley, I said to you about six times, I wanted to talk about whether Mario Celico was qualified for the job, so I think you're misstating the thing. The other thing, when you go to court, it's not a private matter. You're in court. How is that a private matter in court? It's not, it's a public, you're using the resource of the down. So you're in court, and you're using the court system, and it's not a private matter. And you're dishonest. And you lied to the court, and I think an argument could be made, it was perjury. Yeah, they don't charge perjury every day because they be doing it a lot, but I think a town counselor who goes into court and lies under oath is not qualified to be on the town council. And there'll be more, I'm going to, well, so you didn't answer my question, so I'm going to be putting your, on your transgressions in this town on the agenda, so how do I do that without going to you? Because according to your rules, all you have to do is send a letter to the clerk, and it goes immediately on. But it's going to be you every time, and you're going to knock it off every time.
Well, let me give you this explanation, Mr. Lombardo.
Please do.
As the presiding officer of this council, I set the agenda. If you were to request to go on the agenda to speak about anything personal of any one of these counselors, I would deny it, it would not get on the agenda. Okay? But because you cited that I had a conflict of interest, I couldn't make the determination not to put it on the agenda. But let me be emphatically clear. If you attempt to contact the town clerk to talk about a counselor's personal life as a matter of an agenda item, it will not make it on the agenda.
Well, you're going to change the rules then? You're going to change the rules?
And if you do it in reference to the chair, I will defer to the solicitor's office to make that determination. But understand clearly, if you attempt to put something on the agenda that is in regards to a personal counselor's life, the chairman will not put it on the agenda.
But that's a violation of your rules. Why don't you change the rules? There is no, there are no restrictions on that rule. You are putting restrictions on it.
I think I made the-
And that's why you're not qualified to be sitting where you are. Because you're dishonest and you don't follow the rules. And if you're going to send it to the attorney, why don't you send him my exact email that I sent? You didn't, he didn't know what was on it, and he's making a decision without even knowing what the subject was.
Your exact email was forwarded to the solicitor's office, and it was reviewed by somebody in his office.
Why don't you give me the name?
I will, I will. The solicitor will give you that name, okay? But in the future, if you want something on the agenda that's in reference to my personal life, send that request to the solicitor.
Okay. But you don't even have to put the topic on, as you know, people come on and they're very vague. I was very specific. They can be vague, you have no requirements. You're making it up as you go along, you're fudging it. The rule is clear. If you send a notice to the town clerk, it immediately goes on the agenda, and that's the way it's been, I've been doing it for two years, there's never been a situation where you take it out. But there is now.
The public does not set the agenda. The presiding officer of the council sets the agenda.
Will you change the rules?
Any request to go on the agenda is approved or disapproved by the presiding officer.
First time.
First time, 10th time, whatever, going forward, I'm telling you how it's going to be.
Oh, I know you are.
And if it has to deal with me, it'll be deferred to the solicitor. So make your request directly to the solicitor's office. And then he will advise the clerk whether or not it goes on the agenda, absence of my input or whatever.
Okay. Okay, we'll see. Thank you for your time.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes?
Again, for the sake of completeness, if I had been sitting in my office that afternoon, and I had received that inquiry from the clerk that there was a request to put a personal matter of any member of the council on the agenda that was not related to the public discussion, I would have given the same response and said, "No, that's inappropriate. The First Amendment doesn't require that you do that." So I wanted the council to know that, it wasn't because you got somebody else sitting in my office other than me, I would have given the same answer.
Thank you, Mr. Solicitor. There are no-